Call to order, the common council meeting for Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. Clerk?
Thank you, your honor. Eleven members are present and voting in civic clerk, and one member is excused. Alder Wery.
All right, thank you, clerk. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation led by Alder Lynn Gerlach.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States.
The states, states of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would invite you to be seated, please. You know my style. What a time it is to be alive on earth. So much has happened since the last time we met. The tragedy in Afghanistan, especially the tragedy for the female half of the population. The natural disaster in Haiti, again, at least 1,400 dead. The largest wildfire in recorded history still out of control on our west coast. And we're just informed that climate change is no longer reversible. A key freshwater reservoir, Lake Mead, at almost its lowest level in about 100 years. Knowing now that some of our western states are going to face water rationing, and some of their farmers are going to get half the water they're used to getting for their farms. And through it all, the COVID numbers rising steadily. You know, when I face things like that, a situation that bleak, I always look for a poem to help me understand it, or interpret it, or maybe cope with it. I had a really hard time this time. I've really had trouble trying to find a poem to deal with all of that. And I finally settled on one that comes pretty close. The interesting thing is that this poet couldn't possibly have anticipated any of this, because he died in 1993. This is the American poet William Stafford. And he wrote this poem called "A Ritual to Read to Each Other", and I think it's kind of appropriate for what we're facing right now. If you don't know the kind of person I am, and I don't know the kind of person you are, a pattern that others made may prevail in the world. And following the wrong god, we may miss our star. For there is many, a small betrayal in the mind, a shrug, that lets the fragile sequence break, sending with shouts the horrible errors of childhood, storming out to play through the broken dyke. And as elephants parade, holding each elephant's tail, if one wanders, the circus won't find the park. I call it cruel, and maybe the root of all cruelty, to know what occurs, but not recognize the fact. And so I appeal to a voice, to something shadowy, a remote important region in all who talk. Though we could fool each other, we should consider, lest the parade of our mutual life get lost in the dark. For it is important that awake people be awake, or a breaking line may discourage them back to sleep. The signals we give, yes, or no, or maybe, should be clear. The darkness around us is deep.
Thank you all there for those words. Onto approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Dorf, to approve the minutes from the August 3rd, 2021 council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posnay? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. The agenda made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Any changes here? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posnay? The ayes have it, the agenda has been approved. Just a couple notes here in my report. Just a couple of events that I wanted to flag for people upcoming this Saturday. There is a dedication of a mural over at Nappalee's Lounge on Cedar Street on Saturday evening. So I will be there to read a proclamation and cut a ribbon and dedicate that mural, and dedicate the reopening of the front door at the Nappalee's Lounge, which should be a very nice event, well attended, and would invite members of the public and members of the council to that. Also, we've got an ignite market coming up on Saturday. So we haven't had one of those in a couple years, welcoming them back, of course, and so planning to visit that. My wife and I will be down there, and might even be guest bartending. So come out and grab a beer. So encouraging people to attend that event as well, and just keep an eye on all sorts of things that are going on. I think Rock the Dock is also on Saturday evening on City Deck. Have a lot going on all over the city, and want to see people out and enjoying those things. So that's all I have for a report this evening, and we will move along to announcements from our council. Any announcements?
Your honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yep, just one more event going on, kind of a big one, Untitled is coming back for the...
Yes.
At the library, most of it's going to be held, I believe. A lot of fun authors, fun events, fun things going on there. So, not going on, but check it out.
Absolutely, great point. Other announcements?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Alder.
I just wanted to say that what Alder Scanell had mentioned, yes, is coming up, and there is an author that's going to be there. And I just started reading this author, and she writes about Darkoney. It's murder mysteries about Darkoney.
Oh, very good. Any other announcements from council? All right, seeing none, we'll move along to appointments.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. And that is to approve our one appointment here, an appointment to the redevelopment authority, Brooke Gerkey, serving as liaison for On Broadway. All in favor, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Yes, Alder Johnson, please. Repeat that, Alder.
If I can be shown as abstaining?
Absolutely. So the motion is approved. Onto ordinance's second reading for adoption.
Motion to adopt.
Motion has been made to adopt that ordinance, made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will use the board.
Thanks to Alders, you may vote.
I'm a yes, mayor, mine's not coming up.
Thank you.
I'll vote yes as well, mine isn't coming up either.
Oh, you know, Alder, I do have your vote, so thank you so much. Yes, I'm not sure why it didn't come up, I see you as...
You see as yes, okay.
Yes, yes, make sure I'm in the right place, yes, indeed. Okay, thank you so much. Let me share my screen.
That is adopted, 11-0. Showing off our mind-reading software.
Oh, no, you can't see it?
No, 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 I was just joking about Alder Dorf.
Maybe I just, I did it, and then, never mind. I was seeing the next item.
All right, now we are on to item K, report of the redevelopment authority.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Any items here you wish to handle separately? Item two. Any others? Seeing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posnay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved, with the exception of item two. Your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. The item was pulled by Alder Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, I just have a question for Director Heronik. You know, I watched the video on this, and it's my understanding that the bulk of this expense is really coming from laying the fiber to the parks that would be required for, to create the hotspots or the wifi in those areas. I know that there's been some secondary conversations about the potential to plug into some security systems for issues that are occurring in some of those parks. Have there been any conversations, or are there any thoughts around tertiary benefits from laying of that fiber? I mean, are there beyond security and beyond those wifi spots? Is there anything else that that fiber would be used for?
Yes.
With authority.
Yes, there's been discussion on what other uses there could be of that. We would have to see if it complies with the grant rules.
Okay. And I think, you know, and I had a conversation with Director Sextschulte on this earlier today, and Assistant Director Rainer Weg and I had a brief interaction through text here. I guess, I mean, when I start to look at, at least what the initial proposal was, and the way this was presented to RDA, we're looking at about a quarter of a million dollars to run wifi to four parks as the primary use, to solve a problem of connectivity issues that we have in our low to moderate income neighborhoods. And while I recognize and acknowledge that that certainly is a challenge that we have in some of those neighborhoods, some of the conversations I've had with folks in this industry have indicated that when you take a quarter of a million dollars, is this the best bang for the buck? And I guess I'm just a little bit concerned that perhaps we haven't really turned over every rock to determine if we're making the wisest and best use of this investment. You know, even as I was talking to Director Sextschulte, I mean, it seems to me that for parks, people would actually have to go to the park with their devices to be able to get access to that. And you think about like schools, for example, being high users of this. But schools in session during times of the year, when you'd have to be outdoor, wearing your mittens, you know, at a park, I just can't help but wonder if there's perhaps some other uses that might be able to help us better or more effectively reach those audiences. You know, something like mini-grants that could be provided to pay for wifi directly to housing, and that may or may not be a qualifying expense to the grant. But the general conversation I've had is that there might be some other uses here that haven't been fully vetted. My conversation with Assistant Director, again, Rainer Weg, was that we do have enough time to refer this back to committee, to perhaps have some more conversations with community partners that could help us better frame and understand other solutions that might exist to meet that need. And so with that said, I'm going to make a motion that we refer this back to staff to engage in some of those conversations with other community partners.
Second.
Motion has been made to refer this back to RDA, Alder?
Yes. Well, I mean, I would say refer to staff, because they have to do the work, and then eventually they'll bring it to RDA when they're ready.
Okay, apologies. Motion was made to refer this item to staff by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Stevens. Further discussion? And first, I'll go to Director Heronik, just to respond to any comments.
I'm willing to do that, and I'm willing to partner with private organizations to share the conduit with, definitely.
Okay, great. And it looks like we have a few Alders, Alder Brunet, and then Alder Gerlach.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, I support the motion. The end of the day, what would be great is that we get the most with these funds. We get the modified internet capabilities as possible, whether that be in a public facility, a partner in business, grants, as Alder Johnson alluded to, directly to end-users. The goal really is to get as many people connected, and that's maybe going to require a little more discussion to make sure we're using the quarter million dollars the best possible way to make that happen. I applaud city staff up until this point. You know, I watched the RDA meeting, there was some discussion, not the full depth of discussion that I would have liked to have seen, considering it's a quarter million dollars. So I'm in full support of the motion.
Thanks, Alder Gerlach, and then Alder Dorf.
Just two quick questions. One is whether there's a deadline for when this money has to be spent. And the second one is, I mean, this is a rather creative solution, so I'm wondering where the thought process, if someone could briefly explain why this was the decision, four parks?
Yeah, we could go to Director Heronik for that.
I think we'd have to discuss what the grant guidelines are. And it had to be spent in low-income areas, and there's probably somebody who can better speak to this than me. And then it had to be broadband-based. So you're kind of limited in what you can do and where you can go with it. We split up the spatial distributions between the parks as best we could. But again, I'm more than willing to discuss the map or the layout of the fiber conduit.
Okay, thanks, Director. And then in terms of timeline, Director Sextschulte?
I think, the discussions with staff, I believe that we have, there's a timeline in September. I think later September, we're limited to what we're going to be using this. And Director Heronik was correct, I mean, we have, I think Deputy Director Riggs informed me that we have to spend these funds in areas that have already been approved, in CDBG areas. Not in terms of geographic areas, but in terms of actual funding group areas. So we are somewhat limited in doing that. So I think broadband was one that stood out as one that made a lot of sense in terms of having the most opportunity. But we certainly, staff does not have any issues with going back and taking another look at that, to ensure that that was still the best option. Right now, my personal feeling is that it probably still is our best option to do that, but certainly making sure that we're doing it in the manner, as Alder Brunet said, in the manner that does have the maximum benefit. Staff's more than happy to go back and take another look, to ensure that that is the case.
Okay, great, and then Mr. Peters, I think you were interested in...
Yeah, Neil and Mike are both on point. I just wanted to expand upon what they mentioned already there. There are limitations to these funds. So we do have to follow the original allocation programs that were developed for the first round, right? So that would be, we can only fund projects either in the essential frontline employee relief, the homeless shelter assistance activity, or the business revolving loan activity, or the grants. So we can't create any new activities. We have to funnel these funds into one of the activities we already developed. We reached this decision for this activity because the money from the other activities we funded, with the exception of the homeless shelter assistance, have not been completely spent down. On top of that, there are already a number of other funding sources out there currently, such as the WIRA funds for rent and mortgage assistance. So we didn't want to duplicate any other programs that were already out there. And then in terms of the broadband, this is still community development block grant funds. So though it's geared towards pandemic relief, we still are bound by the limitations of the block grant dollars. So regarding paying for direct service to houses, that's not an eligible activity, we couldn't do that. We can only lay down infrastructure. You know, that's the eligible activity through these federal funds. And then just with talking with members of the school district, and looking at just what the connectivity rates are in some of these neighborhoods, that's how we honed in on these four neighborhoods, and honed in on the activity of broadband access.
Great.
To Director Neil's, Sextschulte's points, you know, we're more than happy to take another crack at this and explore this further.
Okay, thank you. Alder Gerlach, did you have any further?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Alder Dorf?
Thank you, Chair. So I'm on RDA, and when this first came up, I was kind of taken aback, because this was an unusual idea. I had never heard of anything like it. I was concerned because the broadband was going to be from the shelters, and I thought, well, what are people going to do, you know, during winter and clement weather? I thought it was a fairly robust conversation. There were lots of questions asked. By the end of it, I was convinced that Director Heronik and Will Peters and Neil Sextschulte had come up with a pretty good idea. I understood that there were these parameters, that it was within these certain parameters of the CARES funding, we could only use it. I understood why this bucket was chosen. I understood there was a deadline coming up. So now, RDA doesn't meet again till September. And we're going to be pushing right up against some, a deadline between RDA and then getting it back to council. So I'm glad that there was more explanation tonight. I am just concerned, I'm asking staff, what other different thing could we come up with that quickly, that fits all the criteria, and that we can get, you know, we can dedicate this money to by September? Because we did talk about it for a very long time at RDA.
Yeah, again, you know, I never like to say this, I want to say that, and any other alternatives. You know, there's always alternatives. Yeah, and we are limited to the three programs that we originally funded in our first round of CARES funds. I mean, that's really all we can fund. And within, the essential frontline employee relief program is the more, lends itself to more options with the creative thinking, looking at ways that families and residents, individuals have been impacted by the pandemic, and how we are able to provide some sort of relief. And the discussion around broadband and increasing access to broadband is not something new. That is a conversation that has been happening for a number of years that Director Heronik can speak to, and also it's been happening for a number of years between the county and the school district as well. So that's just one that we thought, well, hey, this is an eligible activity with these funds, and this would be providing a service to those families who, you know, approximately one in four in these neighborhoods have no, have either no or limited or no access to broadband. And then looking further, there are areas as well, because my understanding, and Director Heronik can correct me if I'm wrong, really, right now, we have to work with what infrastructure is currently laid out between county conduit and ours, and build off of that. So we couldn't necessarily just jump all of a sudden to the other side of town where there is no infrastructure already. I mean, we really kind of have to almost branch out from the center, so to say. Because I know that there are also other, you know, neighborhoods, like near the Nicolay attendance area, Nicolay School, and like Eisenhower Park. That is even a dead zone for the hotspots that the school district has, that lets their students use. So it was just an issue that staff looked at and explored, and through discussion, that's where we reached that. So, but to your point, again, I mean, we can go back and discuss this further, and bring it back into the RDA in September. I'm not going to say that we're not going to find another alternative, because who knows, we could. But I can say that, you know, staff and others, myself, like Director Heronik, Krista Cenaros, other staff, we've tried to, I guess, explore this as much as possible. And this is the, to this point, up to this point, the best use of these funds that we've been able to determine. Outside of, again, funneling these funds into a program, a separate program that already existed. But those funds still have money in them, they're not all spent down yet. So we just, we wanted to be cognizant, conscious of that, and the other funding sources that are out there through the state and local level.
So is this just a start? Maybe I should direct that to Director Heronik. Is this just a beginning? And then from there, it can get bigger? Or is this like it, the four parks? And then at some point, you can't really add on to it?
Yes, you could add to this, we have built that into it. We would like to reach further out to other low-income areas if more grant money becomes available.
And at what point are we risking not getting that money? What is the drop-dead date? When do we have to have this decided?
Mr. Peters?
So this money is allocated to us, it's available, it's sitting in a reserve, let's say. It's sitting in account for us at the state. We simply have to request it. And we can choose not to request these funds at all. We're not, these aren't, have already been awarded, and therefore obligated to spend them. We just don't want to say no to money that is available to us as a municipality. As far as a deadline, we already submitted a letter to say that we will be funding, you know, a program that we already created with our first round of CARES funds. If we decided to switch that from the essential frontline employees to, let's say, homeless shelter assistance, you know, we could do that. We could take the month of September. I mean, we're not going to miss a deadline if this is put off another month. That being said, you know, I'm, you know, not going to, you know, staff is confident in the decisions that they made, but we will take direction ultimately from council here, and more than willing to work with you on this.
Okay, well, then, just, and my final statement is, I'm confident as well, because that's why I voted yes on it in RDA. And I hate to send it back, and I know that's probably what's going to happen, but I do want to tell you, Will and Mike and Neil, I am confident that you made a good choice.
Thanks, Alder, Director Sextschulte?
Just, obviously, just a note on this, and the key thing to have, I think, for our sake, is to have funds kind of obligated and ready to be spent, if not actually spent by the deadline. So certainly having some, you know, maybe even if we had to do a special RDA meeting to try to do something, maybe that's something we could consider, to try to get it to the earliest council meeting possible. Again, there's obviously, we have our own purchasing guidelines and things we need to do when we're contracting. So we, you know, obviously providing the maximum amount of time for us to be able to do that certainly is beneficial, and certainly would be well-used in terms of our soliciting any sort of work that we may end up needing to be done from a contractor. So just in terms of the actual having the money dedicated, we can designate it by the end of that time, but I think we really want to have that kind of actually committed, and we can demonstrate that the money has actually been committed by the end of September.
Okay, thank you, Alder LaFave, then Alder Galvin?
My question is simple. My understanding is that they wouldn't have to physically be in the building in those parks, would they? Because I think you can pick up, you can, you know, click in to different ones. Like to me, for Bay Beach, I don't have to be right at Bay Beach, is that right?
You're correct.
How far do you, can you go out from the physical, you know, like the building?
There are many variables. You have environmental variables, and, you know, other structures that could compete with it, block the signal. So every location is different. I could not give a total radius for you.
Okay.
Alder Galvin, and then Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, your honor.
Director Sextschulte wanted to say something.
Director Sextschulte?
Just quickly, I think the ideal goal would be to actually have, be able to have residents certainly, if they're in bad weather, be able to access it from the parking area in their vehicles, so they wouldn't have to go out, actually, to get out to access the service in each of those parks. Just wanted to make sure. Ideally, that would be our goal. We may need to work with Director Heronik to make sure we've got enough infrastructure to do that. But that would be the objective, I think, at each of those park facilities.
Alder Galvin?
And then, based on what Director Sextschulte just said, Sextschulte, I'm sorry, said, I don't, if I recall, I don't recall a parking lot at Navarino Park at all. I think it's all street parking. And as Director Heronik is talking about, there's environmental factors that could limit the range of the wifi. It concerns me. But, you know, and if we could open the park shelters in the winter, if there was announcements made at the schools, that the children could then use, you know, go into the shelter, say, if they walk from home while they're waiting for mom or dad to get home from work. But I agree with Alder Dorf, I think staff has done a real good job looking into this. But I don't think it hurts to take another look, especially if we have some fresh information put in. But I will relate this story, and this is, what's happening here reminded me of an incident that took place a few years ago, I was in Haiti. My daughter was living there, working in a town of about 30,000 people, in which there was no electricity at all in the town unless you had a solar panel or a generator. And it's kind of weird to be driving around in a town at night, and the only lights literally are your headlights, there are no streetlights or anything else, everything is pitch black. And we came upon a building that was surrounded with a low-four-foot wall all the way around it, and this building was lit up like the middle of the day. And the wall was covered with schoolchildren at night, doing their homework, sitting on the wall, doing their homework all the way around this building. And I asked my daughter, I said, "What is this?" And she said, "It's one of..." And she said, it's it's one of the two morgues in town, and they have to have electricity. And so they turn on their lights at night so that the schoolchildren can go there and do their schoolwork at night by the light of the morgue. Um, and so I I applaud the city for looking uh, for a way to make broadband more available uh, to to the citizens of this community. And 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 I applaud that the the effort we're making. And I just hope that uh, that what we do will will draw the people that need it just like it did in that that small town in Haiti. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Sawyer?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Um, after listening to Will and Directors Ronnick and um, Sackshulte, uh, as well as some of the other Alders, I feel fairly confident with this as well. I think they brought up some very good points about broadband. I realize, uh, you know, there's time sensitivity regardless. You know, if you have to call a special meeting, my feeling is that, you know, let's let's just move forward with this. So I I I will go with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. And then Director Ronnick wanted to chime in. I would like to an uh, answer Alder Galvin's uh, statement. Uh, we were going to stick up a poll in the middle of the playground area at Navarino Park and stick the Wi-Fi uh, access point on that. So there is no shelter there, you're correct, but we were going to plan on doing that.
All right, thank you. I mean, um, that park is very well known for its reading chair uh, where they encourage schoolchildren to come and read books in groups and that. So I think that's a pretty good add on to that program. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Gerlach, for a second time? You're muted, Alder.
I know, I hit something wrong on my screen, sorry. Just one quick question for the staff. If I were having to make this decision, my question would be, was there another really good second choice that you kind of have waiting in the wings? If there isn't, then I'm perfectly comfortable going forward with this. But I would like to ask you, is there a second choice that you thought was really good?
Director Sackshulte?
My understanding, Alder, is that there there really wasn't a good, clear second choice. Uh, again, as as I think Mr. Peters discussed, you know, we looked at those other categories and we have, we have funds that remain unused in those other categories. Um, so we really felt that this was the one, you know, kind of at this point, was the really, really the viable alternative that was presented. Uh, it did present a rather unique opportunity. It is a creative uh, application of the funds. But I think it is, it is targeting those neighborhoods uh, where I think where the the income impacts are are felt the hardest. Um, so I do think this is, this is a viable alternative. And I do think it is something that can be built on going forward. But um, to my knowledge, and I'll ask Deputy Director Rehnerwig or or Mr. Peters to to chime in, uh, I was not aware of of a real a competitive second option that we're, that was discussed.
Right, Director. This is, I, this was the choice that we felt the most confident in, that, you know, we could spend these funds down in a timely manner. Um, and it was also opening the opportunity um, to 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 build off of this, to expand upon um, this infrastructure, uh, which was what made it seem really appealing. Um, the thought that I, that I guess related to is you look at electrical circuit, you know, and you remove, you know, a small fraction of that wiring, and that circuit no longer works. And I relate that to this and that we're helping pave the way with this infrastructure to be able to reach further out into the city and grow this program. Um, and and so what I like about this option is that, you know, yes, the primary benefit as far as these CARES funds are concerned, the reason why we're doing this is to create, you know, those hotspots, those access points for students, um, families and individuals to access the internet for school or employment applications, et cetera. Uh, but there are a number of secondary and even um, a third or fourth quadruple benefits, I guess you could say, from um, building this infrastructure.
Great.
Thank you for that. I I I trust the staff, I trust the RDA, I'm good with it now.
Thanks, Alder. Any additional comments? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And again, just, I mean, two things that hearing uh, really robust and useful conversation here tonight. Uh, the first thing is that even in the motion here, it says that, hey, we're going to consult with Bridget Riordan, who is a member of the RDA and of course, works for uh, for a tech company. Um, but we're still honed in exclusively on parks. And I can tell you that in my conversation that I've had, that there are some possible uses that might be more beneficial and reach more people that aren't exclusive to parks, that there are some other areas that could be considered in some of these low, low income neighborhoods, which again, is why I go back to uh, advocating for a referral. And and I think it's been made clear by staff that we have enough time to refer this and have those conversations, explore those options. The other thing that kind of emerged that Mr. Peters has brought up a couple of times is that there are other possible options. And I don't want the city council to forget its obligation in this conversation. And that is, staff certainly makes recommendations, and they've done some incredible research on on this particular recommendation. But our job is strategic vision for the city and understanding where some of these actions fit into that. And we've only been given one option. And I think it would actually be very useful for us uh, to understand what some of those additional options are. Mr. Peters had suggested uh, the the revolving loan fund loans, some of the other frontline assistance. And I appreciate the the input that he provided as well, that in in terms of why they steered away from those. But I think for my benefit, I'd like to to better understand maybe some of the parameters of where where else this could be invested. What are some of those other options to make sure that that we're advancing the city as a whole in the best way? Um, you know, that we feel that the city council needs this to go. So again, we have the time. I think that there are some things that we can do to tighten up this recommendation. And it may come out that this is the recommendation. That's okay. But it, but we do have the time to take a second look. So I would advocate for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. Any additional comments? All right, well, I would just say that, uh, you know, I've had conversations with Director Heronick on this, with uh, with Director Sackshulte. Um, obviously, I have a lot of faith in the work that staff has done in tandem with the RDA. I know that Director Heronick has already reached out to a local uh, service provider to see how we might be able to collaborate. He's in constant contact with our Brown County. Um, I I S Services, because they also have, you know, pretty robust um, infrastructure here in Greater Green Bay. Um, I know going forward, he will continue to have those conversations to make sure that this work is done in the most cost effective way. So from my perspective, I'm certainly comfortable moving forward. Um, but we will see what council thinks. So the motion is to refer to staff. That has been made and seconded. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Not sure what that was. We're going to use the board. And again, this is a motion to refer to staff.
Thank you, Alders. You may vote.
Mayor, I have a nay. Mine's nay.
Thanks, Alder.
Thank you. And I don't see other people voting. So let me just reset this vote and try it again. And I'll mark you as a no, Alder Sawyer. All right. And I have reset the vote. Thank you. Mr. Vanderleest? Thank you. Just give me a moment to share my screen. Uh, excuse me, can you see that?
No.
No, okay. So sorry, give me one more moment.
And that is referred back eight to three.
Yeah, oh, you did, thank you, yes. Ah, there we go. Thank you so much.
You bet. All right, so now we are on to report of the Improvement and Services Committee from August 11th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Gerlach. Any items here to be handled separately?
One.
Any others? Item one will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved, the exception of item one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Approved made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. This was pulled by Alder Brunet, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Public Works created a a good investigation into the issues that one of the affected constituents doesn't agree with some of the reasoning. So I'm just simply asking for a motion to, I'll make a motion to refer back to committee for further discussion there.
Motion to refer back to committee made by Alder Brunet, seconded by Alder Vanderleest. Director Green, any, any comments on that, sir? Director Grenier, any comments?
We'd be interested in hearing what the discussion is, but it's not going to change uh, the outcome of what we came up with in the report.
Okay, very well. Alder Brunet, any response to that, or?
Well, to be honest, that's a little disappointing to hear that, you know, one idea is proposed and someone kind of questions it that we can't, that we're going into it that nothing will change. I I guess I don't agree with that. We don't even know what the constituents' main concerns are. I'd rather discuss that committee. So I I I do want to refer back.
Okay, Alder Galvin?
I think what Director Grenier was saying that was that the report won't change. I mean, it's like mathematical problems. The numbers are the numbers and and what is what they have in the report. Um, I I would certainly hope that he would be open to suggestions if there's something that he or staff has not thought about, but.
Yeah, that's what I meant. And no offense to Director Grenier, maybe I misunderstood what you were saying. Um, but yeah, I refer back would be appropriate, in my opinion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it, item has been referred back. Report of the Protection Policy Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder LaFave. That is the report of the Protection Policy Committee from August 9, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none? All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved. Protection Policy Committee granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any extensions or names to be handled separately? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved. Plan Commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Items here to be handled separately?
Ma- Mayor, um, whatever one is the sand, sandstone one, I can't see it on my screen for some reason.
Uh, item two?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I don't even know if we need to pull it necessarily, but I just want it knowing that there's a spelling error, I believe. Uh, here, not here, but I believe under resolution. So maybe staff wants to look at that, I just noticed it.
Okay, uh, spelling error in in.
I think it's sandstone, not sandstone.
Okay. We will have staff take a look at that. Thanks, Alder. So hearing uh, none to be handled separately, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved. On to Personnel?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved. EDA?
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve the report of the EDA from August 2nd, 2021 by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Any items here to be handled separately? Number two? All right, hearing none others, all in favor of approving.
Number one, I have a question, just a quick question on number one.
Why don't you just go forward with your question, Alder?
Um, the amount, is that 5,000? I thought we had a special rate for parklets.
Question would be for Alder, or uh, Director Sackshulte, rather?
Yeah, I believe this, the the grant, Alder, I think is actually, uh, oops. Uh, I want to say something that, $20,000, $20,000 or $25,000 was the idea that a $5,000 grant would help offset the actual costs related for a private individual or business to actually create and implement their parklet. So that was the, yeah, the intent was to establish a fund to help off, cover all or most of the costs related to getting the parklet uh, created and installed.
Alder LaFave?
Okay, I didn't, we couldn't hear it the first part, but I guess I understand it. Okay.
Oh, okay. Yeah, $5,000 is the correct number, Alder. That was, that was intended to cover the cost of, to defray the cost of installation and construction.
Okay.
All right, so we will handle item two separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved, the exception of item two.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Johnson. The item was pulled by Alder Corpus Dax. Alder, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just asking that we hold this until the next council meeting to allow staff and uh, city attorney time to finalize the the agreement.
Okay, thank you, Alder. Request has been made to hold this over until the next council meeting. That was certainly done in consultation with staff. Uh, so would entertain a second there?
Second.
It was seconded by Alder Vanderleest. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, and that item has been held to our next meeting. Report of the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. And those are the reports from July 21st, 2021, and August 10th, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number two.
Item two, any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved, the exception of item two.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Alder Brunet, you have the floor.
Yeah, um, for Attorney Chavez, do you have an update on this situation? Perhaps the council should go into closed session. I prefer an open discussion, but I understand the sensitivity. There are others who would opt to go in closed session. Could you kind of direct the council with as much as you can share in open session?
Attorney Chavez?
The update that I can share is that the the response that was submitted to the WEC by complainants was rejected, rejected um, by their counsel, um, not meet the requirements. And so they've given them until the 19th to submit a new reply. Um, and so the current document and all the exhibits have been stricken from the record.
Alder Brunet?
Uh, just simply make a motion to hold until our next meeting.
Okay.
Motion has been made by Alder Brunet to hold item, it was seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion? Alderdorf?
I prefer not to hold it, and I prefer to go into closed session to have some discussion about this. I think we can make some decisions tonight. I don't think we need to keep holding this all the time.
Is there a motion?
Well, they already moved to hold it, but you know, I mean, I'm just saying I'm against holding it, and, and I would like to go into closed session. It is that, does that trump the holding motion if I say to move to go into closed session?
That is a good question. Attorney Chavez? Or Alder Burnett, you referenced, uh, closed session, is that something that you would
Separate motion.
To move into closed session is, is properly on the table? Say that one more time.
What?
I would consider that a new main motion, so the motion to hold would take precedence.
Okay.
Uh, Alder Gerlach?
So, if, then if we're going to vote on the motion to hold, may I ask Alder Burnett to, if he can, without going into closed session, give any reason why he wants to hold it? I mean, I just hear that he wants to hold it, but I don't know why.
Alder Burnett?
Uh, according to what Attorney Chavez said, that the response to our response can be filed in a few days, so if you recall in our last meeting, I made the point that I would like to know, uh, once the response is filed, that we had an opportunity to read it. Well, as Attorney Chavez says, we, it's stricken from the record, it's like that document does not exist. So it doesn't mean that there won't be a response that is accepted, so it would be appropriate to make a motion to hold to see what the response to our response is. And then, second of all, I'm sure you all have received an email from somebody connected to this situation, and I don't think we should just cross that over if there's some conflict uh, with that person from what we're told, so it's just a simple
Follow up with a question, please?
Yeah, Alder Gerlach, go ahead.
Um, so, when you say that it's been stricken, I've been just confused, isn't that the um, the document that we were already given access to and had, like, a week or two weeks to read it? And now it's stricken from the record? Am I right, Attorney Chavez?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I've read it.
Two.
But it doesn't bear wa- I guess what I'm saying is it doesn't bear weight, it shouldn't bear weight in our decision because the the complainants have an opportunity to respond to our response. Just because it was denied doesn't mean that when they edit it or revise it, that it won't be accepted by the WEC or whoever their legal counsel is.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Alder Galvin?
But, um, and this is for Alder Gerlach. Did you read the response to our response to their complaint?
Um, if you say, if you're asking me if I read the most recent thing that, um, uh, Attorney Chavez
250 pages, yeah.
The what? Yes, yes, I read that. Yes.
And if, if, I mean, it's not gonna change. If they respond, again, they're not gonna change any information, and they're just gonna, they just have to change how they submit it.
Right. Found it very difficult to read, I just wish they would have, uh, yeah.
Okay. And, and so, Alder Burnett, you think that their response to our response is going to change, or just that their response is, um, I, I don't get it. I mean, we, either we've read it or we haven't read it, we've come to a conclusion after we've read it or haven't read it. Um, I would imagine whatever they give, if they give anything back by the 19th, is gonna be exactly what they gave us before, except they'll do it in a format that will be acceptable to the, the hearing body.
If I could, Mayor.
Alder Burnett?
Yeah, it's just, it's just, I appreciate that, Alder Galvin, but what we're told from the attorneys that is stricken, that we, we shouldn't even consider it as if it didn't exist, because it's not accepted. So it could be revised, it could be thrown out altogether. Maybe they make a more streamlined response, maybe there are other information. I'm just trying to be consistent, I'm not trying to be scandalous at all, I'm just trying to say we don't know what will be accepted, and so we're making a decision to deny counsel or conflict counsel to a former employee involved with either this response or through, I'm just not even comfortable talking about the response, quite frankly, but I guess we are.
Well, I, I guess if, if they don't respond within two days, uh, could I put an addendum on this motion that then we then deny? Uh, that, that we deny, uh?
I, I prefer this to be
Okay, so then we'll wait two weeks to see, well, actually, we get to wait just a couple, three days to see if they respond, then we get to wait another week and a half, and then hash this all out again. Can't wait. Okay, thank you.
Alderdorf, did you have something?
The only thing I would have to say is that I sort of, I don't really want to talk about in open session. And I really wish that we had an opportunity to discuss this, rather than rushing yet again. It seems we show up at these meetings and we go, you know, I'm not ready to make any city council decisions tonight, uh, let's just wait till the next meeting. And it seems to become quite a habit lately, that we, we put things off from one meeting to the next. So, I really would like a chance to talk about it in closed session, and have an, I have some ideas, others might have some ideas, there might be some things that we can do. We can't do them, if we're gonna hold it again, we should come here prepared to make some decisions, if at all possible, and at least prepare to listen if there is some conversation that should take place. So, I'm asking you to vote against this, and to please allow us to have some time to talk in closed session. Maybe in the end, we'll decide to hold it. But we, we don't even get to talk about it, at least not in a way we can talk about it in open session right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Gerlach?
I wonder if, if it would be okay to ask Alder Burnett if he would withdraw his motion so that we can have a motion to move into closed session? Is that Can you consider?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if you're directing that question to the mayor, but if it's to me, I think it's a good motion to remain consistent with what I stated at our meeting two weeks ago.
So you don't withdraw your motion?
I will not, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of holding this item until our next council meeting, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Aye.
We will use the board.
Thank you, Alders, you may vote.
And this is to hold item until our next council meeting.
And Alder Burnett?
Okay, there you go.
On for, uh, thank you.
And that item, or that motion is rejected, seven to four. Alderdorf?
I'd like to move that we go into closed session.
Second.
Motion has been made to move into closed session by Alderdorf, seconded by Alder Scanell. Alderdorf, can you read the language?
Yes, the council may convene in closed session pursuant to Section 19.851G Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The council will thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Section 19.852 Wisconsin statutes to take action on items discussed in closed session, if appropriate, and to consider the remainder of the agenda.
Alright, we'll use the board on that motion.
Thank you, Alders, you may vote. And Alder Sawyer?
Um, I'm sorry, I left for a second. Um, what, what was it again? What do you need here? Just a one?
The motion to enter into closed session has been made and seconded, and it's time to vote, so
Okay, alright, I'm, I'm voting right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, we are moving into closed session on a vote of eight to three.
Okay, thank you, Alder and, Alders rather, and Mayor, please give us a moment to, uh, move everyone into closed session and other people into the waiting room.
Great, thank you, Clerk.
Will we go back in open session?
Second.
Alderdorf makes a motion to return to open session.
I'm not sure that the mayor heard that. Mayor, are you back in the council chambers?
Yep, can you hear me? Clerk Jeffries?
Yes.
You can hear me?
Yes, I certainly can.
Okay.
So there was a motion by Alderdorf and sent in by Alder, um, Scanell to go back into regular order.
Yes. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, we are back in open session, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm, I'm moved to approve item two as written.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve item two as written, that was made by Alderdorf, seconded, seconded by Alder Gerlach. There has been a request to use the board, and we will absolutely do that.
Uh, thank you. Your Alders, you may vote.
Mayor, ma'am, point of order, can you explain what a yes vote is and a no vote, because we're, we're doing a double negative vote here?
So, the item is to deny action on this request. So a yes is denying the request of Kristeski for conflict counsel.
Thank you.
One more time, the yes is to deny, correct?
Yes, correct.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Alders, I am just waiting on Alders, oh, thank you, Alder Sawyer, Alder Johnson? Okay, thank you.
And that vote is nine to one with one abstention. Committee of the whole.
Motion to pro- well, no, no.
Do, do we
Need to go into closed session?
Attorney Chavez, do we need to return to closed session, or is there a way that we can, the information has been provided to all of council.
Right.
Um, is there a way for us to simply move forward?
Um, yeah, so you all were provided with an update um, last week, and so if you are willing to move forward with that update, you can make a motion to prove, prove the recommendation of the Law Department. Otherwise, if you would like to go into closed session, we can do that, so I can explain it to you, um, further.
The recommendation of, uh,
Motion has been made to approve the recommendation on item one, that was made by Alder Scanell and seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, that item has been approved. Receiving place on file?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Motion to receive and place on file. Uh, the building permit report for July 2021 and the municipal court report for August 2021, uh, that was made by Alder Scanell and seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Those reports have been received and placed on file. Onto resolutions.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion has been made by Alder Scanell to suspend the rules and take up items, uh, U1 through U5 with one roll call vote, that was seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. All in favor of the motion? Uh, Alder Burnett, did you have something?
Mayor, just wanted to let you know that the spelling in the resolution is correct from the other issue I mentioned earlier, so, so I'm fine with the motion.
Okay, very good, thank you. Um, motion to suspend the rules was made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, rules are suspended.
Um, ma- Mayor, may I speak for a moment?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, there is a missing document for the very resolution that Alder Burnett was talking about, and so, um, uh, Director Sexuality sent it to everyone. There was a mix-up where we had the document twice in, um, the resolution packet. We discovered that this afternoon, and so, as I said, directed resolution to the Alders.
Okay. Very good. Um, so I will
Motion to adopt.
Yep. Motion to adopt resolutions has been made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Sawyer, and we will use the board.
Thank you, Alders, you may vote. Thank you.
So resolutions are adopted unanimously, 11-0. Petitions and communications.
Uh,
Yeah, we got, uh,
Yeah, ordinances. Mayor.
Oh, sorry about that. Ordinances
Motion to advance.
Motion to advance made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Any comments on that? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, that ordinance has been advanced. Now petitions and communications. Anybody? Alright, adjournment.
You adjourned.
Motion to adjourn made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scanell, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, adjourn, thanks everybody.
Bye.